Good evening and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tustin for January the 10th. For the meeting at 11:00. 1.5 payment of bills.
Yep, we did them. And.
The general fund expanded $61,343.3. Highway expended $46,234.52. Water $12,303.14. Sewer $14,216.77. The lighting district $1541.18. The escrow accounts $1121.25. For a total of $136,717.29. Kaden Greg did the bills?
Yes, we did. We didn't have any problems.
Everything was in order.
A motion to pay the bills is presented.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Any further comment on them? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Into our divisionary portion, again, the ones that we don't go over in the meeting are available online. Is Evan here?
No, Evan is back there, but he did submit one.
Uh, we shall go to Brandy with the Tustin Energy Committee.
Brandy, you can unmute.
Um. Soft plastic. The town is committed to the Tustin Trek Soft Plastic Recycling Initiative. To date, the total of soft plastic delivered by the TEC to the tracks drop off point and home sale is over nine tons, which is over 18,000 pounds. Drop off points in Tustin or in the lobby of Pete's Market, the post office and at the union. Only clean, dry, soft plastic is accepted. And I'd like to thank everybody for contributing to this recycling effort. Quite impressive. Um, LED streetlights. The town has waited two years since 95% of our LED streetlights replaced antiquated mismatched streetlights owned by Nisek. To complete the install of our new town owned LED streetlights, the six Main Street pendant lights need to be hung and fitted with wifi capability. We're awaiting the brackets to hang the units. I've been told by NIPA they should be ready shortly. It's been two years, just saying, but um, I keep nudging them along. And the bank parking lot poles will be installed, I'm assuming in the spring when the ground is not frozen. And then we'll be 100% up and running. And on another note, um, when I talked to NIPA this week, they said their uh, their maintenance program with NIPA has begun, even though the install isn't complete. They realize that the town's not responsible for the delay and we're covered if we need it. Um, the horse. Town is waiting to get approval from New York State Comptroller's Office in Albany for the $200,000 continuation grant we've been awarded by New York State DEC to upgrade parts of the horse. Uh, move it to for now cooperative and to train an operator. Will be part of a food recovery system where food scraps are fed into the Tustin horse. Plant food is produced and applied to vegetables in their garden. Culinary students will cook food for the hungry in the county. And is Ken Klein there tonight? I can't see. Is Ken there? Oh, so Ken, I just wanted to ask you, uh, I could send a connect you in an email with Jessica Weiss, who's the uh, the head of Growing Soul, the nonprofit, who'd like to just coordinate with you and see what you um, the process that's coming up. Is that possible? Could I get your email?
Sure.
Okay. And um, so I'll do that tomorrow. And the bank building court, I'm going to get rid of that whole section because things changed today. So we were trying, we're trying to apply for this $10,000 grant and um, I assert as the, the oversight. And so when we wanted to apply, um, it said that we had to own and operate the building. But Ben was concerned and rightfully so that we don't operate the building at the bank, although we put in air source heat pumps. Long story short, uh, we were told initially that's okay. Today they said, no, it is not okay. So we can't apply with that, but I'm just wondering if we could save um, the grant by how um, you know how many years ago the air source heat pumps were installed in the building you're in right now? Like, like they're all different times, but the latest one, if it's 2016, we could actually replace that whole venture to get the, that final grant with the building that you're in. So we have to look into that and I was wondering, Ben, if you could lead me down the path to find if there's a building folder or something.
The last one that they put in was the one for the third floor. Um, is that the one you're talking about?
Well, what year would that be, do you know?
I think it was late, it was, it was after 2016.
Oh, good, well then that is totally acceptable if we could, you know, readjust it. So I can, let me get proof of that. How do I get uh, data on that, just so?
Um, that is, I don't know. We're gonna have to try to dig it up because the records for that year are probably somewhere between 2016 and 18.
It's for the splitter?
Yeah, the, they would.
I have.
Okay.
I'll get it. Last one said she'd get it, Brandy.
Excellent, thank you. I'm, I just, so we have the plaque, it doesn't have the address on the plaque and it could be exchangeable, she said. But again, we'll go through the, the application again carefully and uh, it see if that works for you too, Ben. And um, so I'll be in touch with that. And so Crystal, I don't need the data from 93 Main Street, 93 Main Street. So stop that, so you don't waste your time. And uh, I just wanted to say this is our 12th year anniversary for the TEC and um, we are a bronze certified climate smart community with the efforts of the TEC and the community and I appreciate that. Just wanted to thank my committee and, and if you guys ever want to follow Tustin Energy Committee on Facebook, that we have a page, so feel free. Thank you.
Any questions for Brandy? Anything on the conservation advisory council zoning update?
Um, conservation, I've tried to meet once a month in the Sydney and um, it was a um, beneficial meeting. We talked about uh, again, starting up a um, series and educational series at the library for everybody. What else can we talk about at that meeting? Oh, the mapping, yes, we're going to uh, we wanted to look and see the mapping that's already been done. We wanted to also, Peter was gonna check with that group that presented at the UGC to see if we could get their data. So things are moving along. Zoning update, uh, we primarily focused on cannabis and uh, make, we're going to have that as a separate uh, zone zoning update law. Um, rather than hold everything back. So we focused on um, making that, when relating that. Water and sewer committee, are we going to that?
You can.
Okay, so we met yesterday at 8:00 AM. And um, the update on the infrastructure project is that the survey, they had to do a survey up at the water tower area to make sure that the new water tower would fit into that space and it's been completed, the survey will fit. A soil test needs to be performed and trees need to be cleared, so all that has to be done. Um, but that will be done. Committee needs to address the sewer rates and adjust them to adequately reflect the um, department expenses. So that's the next thing and I don't see a lot of people from the flats here today, but um, it's important that those residents in the water district, living in the water district, oh, right here, will be receiving a questionnaire asking them to identify the type of pipe that connects though to the water meter, whether it be copper, lead, PVC or whatever. And this is required by New York State right now. And if um, you look at a postcard and if you're not uh, able to identify the type of pipe, then you can call the water district, make an appointment for them to come over and they will identify the type for you. I see someone wanting. Any questions on that? Hey, building committee, we have work to do.
Yeah, we don't really have much for a report on that, but we'll try.
Okay, you and I have to. Grants on 2023 UGC grant, uh, to update zoning, the committee continues to meet. Little Lake Erie Culver, Shoemaker and uh, the New York State CEO team to coordinate in the project. And um, Crystal just sent a whole bunch of documentation that they require. And um, Delaware Engineering continues to work on the infrastructure project and there are no new grants and new works. However, I am going to go next week, I think it's Sullivan Renaissance, which now merged with um, um, 180, whatever, something.
You've got a meeting tomorrow.
It's tomorrow?
No, you've got a meeting tomorrow? Gunther, is it, Aileen?
No, that's, oh, telephone meeting, yes. Um, Ben went down to look for money to um, augment what we've received for the infrastructure project. He went to Aileen Gunther's office and asked me to prepare a state, um, just a timeline of where we are. And Aileen Gunther's office responded and they are going to have a conference call with me tomorrow. To, so that they better understand what they're gonna look for and how they're gonna phrase it.
Haven't talked to the lady in the know.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions for Jane? Before we move into old business, we'll open the floor, starting here first for public comment. Star.
Yeah. I had some Dan at correspondence and asked that it be put on the.
On up to the so we can hear you start.
I'd sent in the correspondence and asked that it be put on tonight's meeting agenda and I don't see it's there. Um, I'd like to know if what I wrote about will be at some point addressed by the board?
I can address it right now. The board has a copy of that, correct? It was CC'd. For the public information, we had a issue with our internet uh, service, our server. It is now repaired. Uh, we had an issue with emails being bounced out and that's what Star is alluding to. Um, the only comment that we're gonna do as a board is it's been repaired. We're not gonna, I'm not going to get into what type of server we have, what kind of programs we have uh, due to our security for that system.
I think I asked for that, but.
You, well, you, you kinda wanted to talk to the internet technology person and you wanted him to.
Only to ascertain how long the outage actually was. And also to ascertain if the server was down and someone sent an email to that server that was down. Normally, if it wouldn't go through, you get a notification of failed delivery. I got notification on one of my emails. The other email supposedly went through, as far as I know, there was no notification of failure. So I wanted to speak with the IT officer and just ask a generic question about that.
Um, he is, you are more than welcome to speak with him. Uh, he is in not authorized to speak about our system. For anybody outside of either the town board members or the town board.
I don't need to talk about our system specifically, I can ask him.
You can ask him whatever question you want, I'm just, so you understand that when you, you get into certain questions, he is not going to answer them due to security of our own system.
And may I have someone get me the name and contact information for this person?
Ryan Kelly?
Ryan Kelly.
Chris Company.
Okay.
I think Chris is spelled with a K.
Yes, and maybe two Ts.
Yes.
Okay, um, the other thing that I had sent in about was the fact that there was no notification to anyone about in the town or people that were affected by this outage. I was hoping that the, the board would make some kind of effort to address that in the case of a future such situation, so that people will know without having their emails bounce back, or even if it doesn't bounce back, you don't know what's going on with the server, because basically the town was incommunicado for, I'm not sure how many days, but it was at least five. So I would like to have the board discuss what kind of a protocol they would put in place to notify people, and I think I gave some suggestions for that. If heaven forbid, something like this happens again.
It's always a telephone.
You were not the only person who had an issue. Um, I had at least one attorney give me a call. I had the department planning from Sullivan County give me a call. Once they weren't able to get through, they, they made phone calls. Um, I don't, you know, if the board wishes to discuss it under new business, we can. Um, we're not hoping to have that issue, Ben.
One would hope, but just, it doesn't hurt to have a plan so that this doesn't happen again. Because that's an extensive period of time when people could not reach the town hall or their offices.
Oh, that's not correct, Star.
Okay.
There's still a telephone.
Well, you can try. Usually I get a, a recording, leave a message and then I don't get a call back. So I, like I said, I wouldn't necessarily know that there was a problem unless I tried to contact the town. And for internet service to be down for that period of time, I think that, that is, you would really have to let the town, townspeople, the community know, anybody affected by that, that that is the situation and that you're working on it.
Do you want to note it? Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else in house? If not, do we have anybody on the room?
Not that I see this time. Nope.
Okay, old business, uh, 4.1. Uh, superintendent, interim superintendent of uh, water and sewer went over the only bid that we received from Cobra Line. And best base price for gallons to include three emergency calls, 24 cents per gallon. The surcharge price per call for emergency calls over three is 27 cents per gallon. Labor hauling and disposal of filter sand was $39 per yard.
Which he was pleased about. He said that they were good rates.
Yeah, I don't recall what he did last year, but.
Well, if you compare it and who was concerned.
Last year, the base price was 22 cents per gallon. The surcharge was also 22 cents per gallon and the labor hauling disposal was $36 per yard.
So it wasn't bad.
Uh, discussion from the board regarding this or a motion?
I moved that we, X, award the water and sewer separate tank plumbing and removal of used filters then to wind river environmental effluent. List.
I have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Uh, 4.2 amend the compensation schedule. A motion to add the part-time position, uh, heavy maintenance equipment operator, the HMEO at the pay rate of $26.17. This is the uh, highway position that we talked about at the December meeting. And after this 4.3, he does have a higher in there, so we need to add that to the compensation and then we need to do the acknowledging of the hires.
This is the substitute.
Substitute, yes, and that, that rate comes out of the union contract. So I would make a motion on 4.2 to amend the compensation schedule to add the part-time position HMO at a pay rate of 26.17.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. 4.3, the acknowledgement of the hire, the superintendent Donald Niger has hired Don McConnell to the part-time HMO position for snow removal as of December 14th, 2022. Um, and the board will recall Don was a previous employee for the town of Tustin in that position.
Now, does that require, we put this in um, the agenda, I didn't know if it required a resolution or not, because you did give them authorization to hire someone, but I didn't know if it needed a resolution stating.
No harm, no harm and ratifying.
Yes. Okay.
Motion to accept the hiring from the superintendent of highways for Donald McConnell.
So moved. To that, what happens if he quits or doesn't want to steward?
We hire somebody else.
I know, but do we have to go through it every time?
For every person we hire, it's not gonna hurt.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna hold it off.
Oh, no, no, he's already working, people, we gave him the authority to work.
Okay.
That's why it's backdated to the 14th of December.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion.
Second, further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Uh, do we have anything else under old business? We can revisit if we have to. Uh, Tustin youth appointments. Motion to make applying appointments for the Tustin Youth Commission. Crystal Weston is chair, Lauren Smith is vice, Kelly Agar is treasurer, Deette Saul is secretary, Jocelyn Strumpler, Ashley Van Betch.
Van Betch.
And Evelyn Dexter is members. I'm.
I move that the uh, list red, appointed to Tustin.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Uh, 5.2, the Tustin Youth Contract. A motion to sign the agreement is presented between the town of Tustin and the Tustin Youth Commission and as of the 1st of January 2023. Whereas the town Tustin wishes to facilitate the funding of the Tustin Youth Commission for the benefit of the youth of the town of Tustin and whereas the Tustin Youth Commission wishes to institute activities for the benefit of the youth of the town of Tustin, is therefore agreed by between the parties that the town of Tustin should fund the Tustin Youth Commission to the extent of $20,000. Two, that the above $20,000 or part thereof stated shall be paid to the Tustin Youth Commission as reimbursements are received from the state of New York through the Sullivan County Youth Services. And if the Tustin Youth Commission will use those funds dispersed to them by the town of Tustin for the use and benefit of the youth in the town of Tustin. And $10,000 of that will be reimbursed um, out of the total. And that is from previously budgeted money. I will make the motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I just think everybody should understand that the Tustin Youth has lots of programs and the public is all welcome to attend the programs. However, if there's a charge for any of these programs, the public doesn't go free, but the Tustin Youth goes free. And I just think it's important that you know that your taxpayers aren't funding for everybody. They're just focused for the Tustin Youth. That's my.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
I oppose. 5.3. A motion to accept the contract ambulance protection from the Tustin Volunteer Ambulance, as presented in that lengthy agreement.
Right. Oh, move that. We accept that.
A second?
I'll second.
Further discussion on it? And this is money that also has been already approved through the budget. All in favor?
I.
Opposed. 5.4. The rental for the New York State Police barracks from the Tustin Volunteer Ambulance Board. A motion to authorize the agreement for the lease in the amount of $13,000. Again, money that has been budgeted.
Yeah, I'll, um, sure, that motion?
A second? I will second. Uh, for further discussion? Questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. 5.5, the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway Contribution. Um, a motion to make the voluntary contribution in the amount of $1,000 towards the 2023 operational expenses of the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway. This is the uh, yearly contribution that each of the member towns contributes for the byway.
That are requested to contribute.
Yeah, request, it is strictly voluntary. You can screw it and not do it.
Okay, I move that we uh, contribute the $1,000 to the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose. 5.6. We have a request for a waiver of the 30-day advance notice for applicant's name of Mi Frye Corporation, a trade name of Los Signo. This is at 90 Main Street to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board.
Where's 90 Main?
That would be the Santana's Building.
Where's that?
Then they're asking for the standard waiver of the 90 day or 30 day period.
Okay. Are they gonna open soon?
I don't know how ABC thinks, so you would think that the 30 days isn't gonna matter, but it certainly takes long enough to get a.
I'll move that we waive the 30 days. Another place to get it. Adult beverage.
Yeah. I will make the second, further discussion on that at all?
What's it called? Los Signo.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed.
I.
Uh, 5.7, our conservation advisory council terms of office. Um, does a board want, what, how many year term does a board want to set? I had some some discussion with Kevin on this before. Planning Board is seven years, zoning board of appeals is five years.
Seven years typically be not a year you have members.
Yeah.
Might as be alternate, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, so that every year, somebody's term expired.
So then that's five years.
So John Dowd is not on?
No, and let me just correct the spelling for you.
Just the D instead of a B. Correct?
It's not Dowd, yeah.
No, John is not and he's not a member, but Bernie Lowman has two N's. And with the same, and it's Alexander Clement, C.L.I.M.E.N.T.
Is there a chairman?
Yes.
You're the chairman?
Yeah. So that's the one year appointment.
Huh?
That's the one year appointment.
Right, the board will appoint the chair every year, but the position would still be the, the same amount.
So let's do that, one year for the chair.
So the idea here is if, if the board is gonna agree to five years, we just need to take each person and put an expiration date to it, so we'd have 23, 24, 25, 26, 27. And in that way, so whoever's wants a short term would end up in 23 and then be reappointed for their five-year term. Does that sound reasonable?
Okay, so you, you have to, um, in this motion, identify that a term is five years too.
Right. So is that what the board wishes, a five-year term? Okay, makes sense, five-year term. And then the easiest thing to do is to go from 3, 24, 25, 26 and 27. So alphabetically, if you're better let it closer to Z. You're there forever.
Well, that's not exactly right. No, you were going to, that's not right.
Okay.
Okay.
Is everybody doing?
So Jane's term would end in 23.
Yeah.
Bernie, 24. Alexander, 25. Kathleen's 26 and Donovan's in 27.
That's in December?
December 31st, they would expire of those years. Um, and then the chairperson would also, the chairperson would be appointed yearly by the town board. It doesn't just go with the person, much like we did with that every year.
Alright.
So the motion would be to set the terms of office for the conservation advisory council at five-year terms. With Jane Luxinger's term expiring in 2023, Bernie's expiring in 24, Alexander's 25, Kathleen's 26 and Donovan's in 27. Alexander's twenty five, Kathleen's twenty six and Donovan's in twenty seven.
And that's December.
I put that in the form of a motion.
So.
Second.
I'll second.
Um, further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Um, one thing that I have that came up, I was talking with Jim today on their new business. He's getting a lot of. Request for complaints on derelict buildings. So the. He'd asked me to present to the board and see. If we want to start a discussion on what we want to do. And Ken can tell us that it's a wrong procedure.
Um, I do, we have an unsafe building. Law in our code book, right?
Yes.
Yes.
We have to follow that procedure and we have to follow it carefully.
Yes, we have to notify.
It's about due process. To the hearing.
And isn't there reimbursement from the county and so?
Well.
Generally, no, Jane, uh, it's from China time to county has offered grants where. They made available funds if you applied for ahead of time to, uh, and I don't know whether the programs were running or not, but I do know some other towns where they apply for money. And they usually would offset the the the, uh, the the disposal fees. It's not, I mean, it wasn't.
Mm-hmm. I do remember in the past we did do that.
It's an expensive exercise.
It is.
If you're going to take down a building, it's an expensive exercise because aside from the procedural stuff. You've got to put it out to bid. You got to pay prevailing wage for the work. You have to do an asbestos, uh, uh, analysis before you take anything down because and if and if there is asbestos or if you can't, because it's such bad shape that you can't. There's asbestos. Jocelyn, tell me if I'm wrong about anything I'm saying, right? And and if you have to dispose of asbestos, then that ramps up the expense substantially.
That is, does that all be, all those expenses become lien against the?
But yeah, then then once it's done, you can levy it as a as a charge against the property.
And is interest compounded on that?
Well, the same as any other unpaid tax.
It's an expense that we didn't mention for, but, um. I I think it's like twenty guys for this house and it's a lot of money.
Sorry.
I couldn't, it was a lot of money.
I'm just, I, and vaguely speaking with Jim today, the one that, you know, everybody knows about on Fourth Street, that's. Going to be your twenty twenty five thousand dollar. Building, there's another one, he went down to view in Luxton Lake today. I don't know how big that was.
Well, you know, the thing is until you put it out to bid.
You don't know.
You don't know what's going to.
And and the asbestos makes the biggest difference.
Does it ever move the property owner to deal with it themselves for fear of those?
You know, Greg, it's hard to say because people are people, right?
Right.
And they respond or react differently. Sometimes you you get their attention by starting the process. Because what you want to, what they need to understand is if they take care of it themselves, it's going to be, even if they're disgusted. It's going to be substantially lower for them to do it than for us to do it. Because they don't have to pay prevailing wage. We do.
So at least they have the option.
They've always got the option, sure. But this is something for the town's production, you really have to cross your eyes.
Oh, yes, you want, yeah.
You would almost do.
Yeah.
Beginning to have, I I'm telling you because I've been through it with other town and. Even if they can find an angle, they're going to claim that you didn't. Do it the right way and then they're going to say you owe them money because you deprived them of their property without due process.
Right, for contents or.
Or whatever, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I brought it to the board. To think about. Uh, speak with Jim on Thursday.
Well, what we could do is, um, just supply to the board that part of our code so that you can read it soon.
Yeah.
And. That's not new, I don't think, although we did review it.
And just one other question, when someone is penalized for a property becoming derelict, if that's the right term or.
It's it's an unsafe building proceeding, so the property has, and the and the, and at the end of the exercise, your exercise, you're 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 going to make a determination that's going to direct them to either secure it. Or remove it. And if they don't within the time that you allow, then at that point, town will either secure it or remove it and levy the cost back on against the property.
So my question is, in the event that an own, an owner, because I assumed there would be fines before it got to that.
There could be that.
And I know in one case it is. Is that a one time fine or is that compounded?
No, it can, I I mean, under our code book, each, it's going to, it's, I'm sure provides that each, either each, each day or each week is a separate violation, so. Depending on how aggressive the Code Enforcement Office wants to be, they can go into court and and. Multiple counts each day, each week, whatever the code provides is the violation. Is is what they can do.
Thank you.
You need to decide, so you want to finish that one?
Yes, each board member has to sign those.
Yeah, we'll grant them. That's all I had that was not on the new business. Does the board wish to discuss anything with our internet at this point and? Something we can look into at another time?
Well, I mean, we have a policy and procedure manual, right?
Um, I think the question that Star was raising is what are we going to do if we lose our internet?
Well, well, that's what I'm saying. If if we just have a policy written, then, uh. That's what we do and. Again, if it's just the internet town, you can still make a telephone call.
The internet wasn't bad. If you start, you know, it's not the internet.
Oh, yeah.
The big part, um, we didn't catch it right away is because it was over our holiday weekend. Yeah, so no, it wasn't the opposite of Tuesday.
Right.
And at that time.
You wouldn't expect a response during a holiday weekend anyway.
As a stop guard in the unlikely event that this happens again, could we? Post something at least on the website. As timely as possible saying.
Yeah.
Town emails are down, please call.
We could do that. That's what I'm saying, if you have a policy. It's one of the policy and then follow a policy, yeah.
For anyone listening, in the event that your emails are bouncing back, feel free to, as long as you copy my town address as well. You want to personally email me, I'll let you know the status, but I'm getting a.
I would, I would always keep your official email.
That's why I said to copy the town, but that's not adequate.
If it's going into your personal email, that's your exposing your personal email to potential foil.
Okay.
Penal, you name it. I wouldn't do it. Recognize against.
I withdraw my help.
Yes, if we ever, if we know the word, our, it's down for a while, then we would definitely put something, this was that thing that. We found out once we made day ish. Now, we didn't know when it was going back.
We're going to move into an executive session, so. Before we make that motion, I will open the floor back up for comments. Just start.
I think.
Come on up. We got that.
I think saying that, you know, you should wait until you try to reach somebody and can't before you. Are told that this system is out is not proactive. And it's not helpful. I think if you could put something out on either the radio, J F F or somebody else. That you don't have to do it for six days. If you just put that out, I'm sure people listen to that station and they would. Spread that with the word of mouth. So just to say, well, you know, we'll wait till it happens and somebody has a problem and then, or you can always call on the phone. I, the idea is to notify people that there's a problem. Not to have people discover that there's a problem when they have a problem. So I would very strongly encourage some sort of policy that is a proactive notification. If and when. And I think it's inevitable that it will happen again, not many right away, just to have. That kind of notification, even as I had written in this letter that the board saw. If you put something outside. On the, on the outside of the building. At least people will have the information. I I don't even think that that's adequate, but at least it's something that you've taken a proactive step. To notify people that at least for X amount of time, you were not going to be able to reach people on. The, uh. Emails.
Any other comment from the court? Is there any other new business that the board has that I have missed? If not, I would make the motion to enter into an executive session. I've got two things for executive session. One is like the bargaining negotiations and the other. Is proposed lease of real property. I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? I oppose. Thank you, folks. I I've got proposed lease of real property.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Uh, recess.
Oh, all right.
We'll make a motion to recess to the eighteenth.
At four thirty?
At four thirty.
You made a motion.
I made a motion.
I'll second that.
Eighteen.